Let's call the meeting to order. Do a roll call.
Kevin Schmidt.
Here.
John Ortley.
Here.
Scott Meverden.
Here.
Mitch Swedberg.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Casey Bore.
Here.
Lee Dashlet.
Here.
Jake Mary.
Here.
Okay, Stanford Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting is in compliance with the open meeting law, and now I would like the approval of the agenda that was submitted.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. The approval of the minutes to the January 2nd meeting. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward and say anything? Anyone from the public? Okay, one more chance, anyone from the public? Okay, then we're gonna move on to the consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance. Did everybody get a chance to look at the bills, and are there any questions?
I have a question, Madam Mayor, I just want to point a clarification, Matt, on the dredging.
Are we paying separate to have that stuff removed then, with this bill from Whitner?
Yes.
So that's not part of the contract?
That is not part of the contract.
So the city crew labor and everything, that's the taxpayers, we're paying them?
That is correct, yes.
I thought we had discussed one time, or somebody had said it was part of the contract, but it's not.
It is not part of the contract, the hauling is outside of the contract price.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have questions. Peters Concrete, Matt, thirty-nine, three, one thirty-nine, three, or thirty-nine, three? Is that the final payment on the last phase?
That is not the final payment, because the final payment won't come till probably like August of twenty-twenty-four.
Well, after the finish coat.
Correct.
But this covers everything that's been done so far?
To date, that is correct.
All right, also, GFL, is that the final bill from GFL? Seventeen, seven?
If we do, it's gonna be a smaller, smaller bill for like the dumpsters.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's nothing like this, that's the last big monthly bill that you're gonna see.
Curbside garbage and recycling, that would be the last one.
All right, and then, lastly, payment in lieu of taxes to Kiwanee County and NWTC for wet property, is that for?
For the DNR, the DNR sends us a large, or not a large payment, but the DNR sends us a payment, and then we break it up to the Oklahoma School District, Kiwanee County, and.
NWTC.
Okay, and what's the DNR sending us money for? Who knows, they're sending us dough and we split it up, okay? Okay, 'cause we're nice people.
And it's split up, when they send the payment, they send a piece of paper right with the payment that says, Oklahoma School District gets this, Kiwanee County gets this, and NWTC gets this.
And you get the rest, and we get the rest?
Yep.
Okay, all right, very cool, that was it.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, Command Central, the election thing, is that just for one year, five thousand?
That's for one year to rent, yep. And they gave us a discount, usually a year is eight thousand dollars.
Wow.
You would figure two thousand per election to rent a machine.
But I suppose if we had to purchase one, it'd be a lot worse than that. And then we'd have the upkeep of them, yeah.
Yeah, the upkeep, the programming, that kind of stuff, with it being a presidential election and the amount of absentee ballots that we process here, we definitely have to do something.
Okay, thank you. And furnace at the Public Works, was it furnace, furnace, or was it?
Cause the furnace furnace.
Okay, did they replace it, or? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just real quick question, point of clarification on the sixty-one, forty-one, versus a check to ourselves for assessment?
We will, yes, I'll get to that in new business.
Okay.
And cover it then, but there's a whole assessment error that happened, so when we get to the new business, I'll explain that one a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, could I get a motion to approve the payment of the bill submitted?
So moved.
Was there a second?
I heard a motion by Dashlet and a second by Ortley.
Yep, okay, then would you do a roll call?
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Bore.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item, committee reports. Does anyone have any questions on any of the committee reports that were submitted? If there are no questions, then I would like a motion to approve the committee reports as presented.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the committee reports are approved. Old business, is there any old business to come before?
There's not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, new business. Okay, talk about the tasers?
Yes, section A under, so the chief is not here, the police chief is at the Wisconsin Chiefs Association Conference down in the Dells, but this was brought to everybody in front of finance and personnel to enter into a, there's a resolution here to enter into a contract for the purchase of these tasers and training, it's kind of an all-inclusive package. So I would be, we'd be looking for a motion with bar any questions.
Just, it seems that people are concerned about the transparency and the communications we have here. Just a little background, these are replacements on current tasers that we currently have.
That is correct, we currently have tasers that were purchased brand-new in twenty-sixteen. They're more or less out of date, they're five-year tasers is what they recommend you have them for. They're hard to get parts if you can even get parts for them, I don't believe they're even serviceable anymore. So this would be upgrading to a taser ten. I wish I could tell you a lot more than that, but it's similar than the, it's very similar to the tasers our on-duty officers carry now.
I think this is the point of clarification, it's a replacement, it's not a new that we're buying.
That is correct.
It's a budgeted item, so it's nothing that is going against anything. Thank you.
I guess Brad, Brad, you could probably, or Cody, address, these are, these actually have, the new ones proposed actually have the ability to fire additional charges than what you're currently equipped with, is that the idea?
I don't know how much detail you want about it, 'cause I'm the taser instructor and I kinda see what they do, but it's a different version of what we have now where you normally see two probes come out of it, this one shoots one probe at a time, and you have up to ten to shoot at one time before you have to replace them.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
If not, then we need a motion.
Second.
Motion, okay, second, then do a roll call.
Yep, so I have a motion made by Kevin Schmidt and a second by Casey Bore, right, to adopt resolution eleven eighty-six, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the purchase of new tasers for the Oklahoma Police Department. And a roll call on that, Ortley.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Bore.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Okay, then the second new business, the correction of error by assessor?
I'm gonna let Erin kinda, do you have a copy of it there? But this is, well, I think somebody asked a question in the bill, Scott did, I apologize, but Erin, why don't you go ahead and?
So, okay, so the question with the bills. What had happened is when the assessor did the assessment roll and the tax bills went out, a property and town got assessed as if there was a brand-new house on that piece of property, it's right next to the other one where this new house went. So this couple ended up receiving a tax bill for a vacant lot priced at a new home. So we have to cut ourselves a check, they end up paying for the, the land is what the vacant land would be assessed at, the city pays the rest, which is what you saw, that sixty-one, sixty-one, whatever it was in the bills. And then we file, at the time of board of review, we file with the Department of Revenue to get made whole for that. So we end up getting reimbursed for it. I don't think that we could ask them to pay that additional six grand for an error that wasn't theirs. The other person who has the new house received a bill that was all marked up that basically, you know, said, hey, your taxes, it was omitted, and this is what your new bill is gonna be, and it's very similar to what the other one was. So then they end up paying the whole bill or the first installment, however, that person decided to pay it, and then at board of review, we end up correcting the tax roll from twenty-twenty-three. Our new assessor is aware of the errors that happened, there was actually another property just down the road that that happened to as well, so our assessor is very involved in this and knows what we're doing, has the corrections already made, so when board of review comes in June, we'll be ready to rock and roll.
So where does that leave us? It sounds like almost a net zero kind of deal, we're refunding one but collecting it from another?
Kind of, yeah.
It will be a net zero into twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, all right.
So that's the first one from the bills. The one that you have in front of you that was included in your packet, so if you look at the form, the correction of errors form, what happened is the real estate value went into the personal property value, so it got taxed as a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred dollars, and it should've been taxed at ten thousand dollars. This customer came in, paid the entire balance, so what I need from you tonight is to make a motion to correct it, that we're agreeing to the ten thousand dollars for the personal property versus the hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We did speak with Mike Mulver, we pulled the files, he is in agreement, I have it in writing, that it's only supposed to be taxed at ten thousand dollars, not the hundred and seventy. So he was, he was also involved in this one.
So that was the, that's the lot price, a bare lot?
This is different, this is personal property. That, the first one that I talked about was going back to Scott's question about the bills, this one is in regards to twelve twenty-three Lake Street. So take the real estate from twelve twenty-three Lake Street and put it on the personal property bill is essentially what happened.
So the tax amount is correct on here now?
The, yep, so the corrected value that you see of the ten thousand dollars, that's what his tax bill should've been. He came in and paid the entire thing, so we will cut him a check for the difference of what it was supposed to be.
Is that the dollar amount that's showing up here over the thirty-six fifty, or?
I'd have to look, I'd have to go back and look what, but the.
There will be another one that'll be cut.
Yeah, there'll be another check, but instead of it being cut to the City of Algoma, it's actually gonna be cut to the JRR Apartments.
Got it.
So was the assessor at fault for this?
Correct.
So was he giving us like some money off of his bill, that's his mistake, it's kind of an expensive mistake?
Unfortunately, no.
No.
No, he's not taking responsibility, like, you know, give me some help.
He has to file the forms, and actually, our new assessor is the one who gave us these forms, so we're just closing the book on that and moving forward.
But the property owners caught it.
The property, yes, so the first one that you saw for the City of Algoma, we caught that one, along with, I think, two other ones. This one, the property owner actually came in and caught. I don't wanna tell you that I don't look at every property tax bill before I send it out, but we don't, we can't look at every property tax bill before we send it out. But yes, the property owner actually caught this one and brought it in, but he made it whole, he paid the whole thing, now knowing that we'll turn around and refund him.
On that note, we need a motion to?
I need a motion to accept the corrected value of ten thousand dollars for the personal property for, at twelve twenty-three Lake Street.
Also moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And then do a roll call.
So I have a motion by John, who are we, giving it to Mitch, okay. A motion by John, a second by Mitch, to correct the value for twelve twenty-three Lake Street's personal property to ten thousand dollars? Does that sound good to both of you? Okay, Dashlet.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Bore.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Then we are on to the administrative report.
Just a couple things before I get into what's on the list here, Andrew from Going Garbage is here, they have now one month complete of curbside garbage and recycling pickup. Couple of little things that we've dealt with here at City Hall, that people that needed some bins that didn't have bins, some changing around. I think another big ticket that, the recycling, corrugated recycling that has picked up curbside and here at City Hall, 'cause we have a corrugated recycling bin out back. If you have your recycling in plastic bags, it cannot be in plastic bags, it has to be dumped, rinsed out and dumped into your garbage bin. And refrain from keeping the gar, putting the garbage in your recycling. That's, you know, citywide, one of the addresses, or one of the things that they talk to us about that we're trying to clean up a little bit. Our recycling has a lot of garbage in it, including people take their recycling out of their house in a plastic bag, it cannot be in a plastic bag, it has to be dumped loosely in that corrugated recycling bin that you have. Go ahead, Mitch.
Shredded, when you shred something?
Shredded paper, they ask if you shred documents or whatever at your household, that you would put that in a cardboard box instead of in a plastic bag. Or a paper bag, like a brown paper bag, don't put it in a plastic bag.
Where does that go then?
Where does the corrugated? No, in the recycling, yes.
As long as it's in a paper bag or a cardboard box?
That is correct.
Does it have to be in one or the other, I just dump it in my?
We're dumping it in the garbage.
Out of my.
It's, I think the reason, and Andrew's here, I think the reason is just so it's not blowing all around or stuck to the bottom of the bin, it kinda keeps it hopefully together. So, is the reason for that. And no styrofoam, styrofoam is not a recyclable product. And with that, all of your other cardboard boxes that don't have paper shreddings in, break them down if you can, it saves you a lot more room in your recycling bin. So, just a kinda keynote to get that out there to everybody, there's some places that are doing really, really good at it, there's a couple of them that aren't doing so good at it, but once it all ends up in the truck, now it contaminated the whole truck of, you know, that they have to pick through that stuff, so.
So Andrew, as long as you're here, 'cause people keep saying, oh, they're dumping everything in the same truck.
Yep.
Just a little background for those people at home and how that truck works, please.
You want me to get up and talk?
Could you?
Yeah, you wanna go to the podium, Andrew, go ahead.
Mayor, if he addresses that? It just seems that there's a lot of questions going around about this.
That's a great question, 'cause we get it here a lot, the garbage guy came and picked up our garbage and they took both of them in the same truck.
It's a great question, all of our trucks are what's called split-body trucks. So the back of the truck or where all the garbage and the recycling goes is the body, we have a divider that goes down the middle of it, or actually a sixty-forty split. And we are dumping both into the same, but there's a divider panel that, for trash, the divider panel's this way. After we dump it, the divider panel goes that way, and that just moves it into the correct part of the body. I'm actually gonna do a video on it, because not only here, but everywhere else, or, you know, that's all we use, is split-body trucks, it's more efficient. And we do get questions on that.
Well, I think part of it is if the old contract, we always had two trucks running around, and people don't see that anymore, so they say, well, look at here, you've got a cheaper contract, but he's mixing everything together, so I appreciate the input, thank you.
Absolutely, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, and.
Can I ask a question?
Madam American?
Do you ask any questions, okay.
The, I think it was said once that garbage should be put in a plastic bag, is that correct?
Correct, garbage should be bagged, recycling should be loose. And again, with shredded paper, you would want that in a paper bag ideally, cardboard boxes, we really appreciate it if they get broken down. Just makes it go a lot easier into the truck and into the hopper. Yes, sir. You said styrofoam wasn't recyclable, is there anything else that's common that we should be aware of that's not recyclable? The rule is, if you question it, put it in the trash. That's usually on the bottom of any plastics, you're gonna see the recycling symbol and then a number anywhere from one to seven, those are recyclable. But, you know, if there's doubt, throw it out.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, then any other comments?
Yes, I just wanted to touch base on that and a couple, thank you, everybody, for the great, great questions and get that out to the public. Another thing on the garbage is, part of our tax statements that go out, everybody gets a calendar of garbage and recycling brush pickup. If you flip that calendar over, it actually has a list of what's recyclable or not recyclable, that's right off the DNR's website, where you can find that, just another key here, and I do believe Aaron has them up at the clerk's front counter, if anybody needs a copy of that. So, Marina dredging, Public Works employees today were down in the marina, we physically put our boat in the marina, probed around from where we've dredged. We have three spots where I think our engineering firm worked with Public Works today, there's three spots where they have to clean up. We're looking to possibly finish tomorrow dredging. With that being said, there's a spoils pile down in the marina parking lot, that will probably be the last pile that we will let that dry down. They will fly that and get a measurement, and we will haul that out and we should be done starting to demobilize out of the marina from dredging. Ahead of our schedule, with that being said, we had an estimated KSC of sixteen thousand cubic yards, and we're probably gonna be about ten thousand, maybe just a touch under ten thousand cubic yards, but we're averaging that nine to ten feet pretty much throughout the marina where we wanna be at water depth currently today. So I feel like we could hopefully gain a little bit of water, so I think we're in a pretty good situation to start to wind it up and start demobilizing, cleaning that up down there.
What kind of timeframe then, Matt, on the, where we're disposing of it, as far as covering it and everything?
It'll probably be, it's one of, yeah, so out there, there's some frozen stuff, there's some stuff that froze while it was out there, there's, you know, I think that's probably gonna be like a June take-a-look at after the spring rains and see what it looks like if we can get on it to be able to cover it. It will happen this summer, it's just a matter of when. Ideally, it would've froze solid and we would've covered it and, you know, spring put topsoil on it, but we're not gonna get on that pile. We're gonna have to let it dry down pretty good out there to be able to do anything with it.
Are you gonna compress it?
Are they gonna compress it?
Yeah.
We will not compress it, it'll just naturally settle in place.
Okay.
So, that's where things are at with the Marina dredging, just an update for everybody and where that's at. Twenty-twenty-four Street Utility Project, we're into February now, but this is coming down the pipeline. The Division Street from Fremont Street to Navarino Street will take place this year, and also Frank Street from Jefferson Street to Washington Street, starting early this spring, but that'll be coming down, working with Peters Concrete that has the contract, to get them out here to have a pre-con and, you know, touch base as that starts to move forward, move it into spring here. If spring stays this and like this, it might start a little earlier than we expect, but we'll let Mother Nature decide that as we move forward here. So, and then the last thing that I have is, we have our Moody's rating back, Jeff Belangi is right now scheduled to be here at the February nineteenth, Finance and Personnel. But the city went from an A to an A-one, we actually went up a whole point, largely to do in part with the sales of the Med Center and getting that off of our books now that the city shows that we have nothing on our books with the Med Center, that's all done free and clear. But that's very good news for the City of Algoma and the Algoma Utilities, actually went from an A-one to an A-two at the Algoma Utilities, and the city at our Moody's rating went from an A-two and A-one, so some good news there, Jeff Belangi is gonna be here tentatively on the nineteenth to break that down for everybody and kind of go through our next steps of where we go from here with where our credit rating is, so.
And what that means, Matt, is that we can borrow a little cheaper.
That is correct.
In the future than what we've been paying to borrow now, because we have a better credit rating, we get a cheaper rate.
That is correct.
Just so everybody understands that.
Yeah. So, that's all I have, I'm gonna turn it over to Erin for a bit, and she's gonna go through, election time is here.
All right, so as you guys know, the spring primary is February twentieth. Just a reminder that the Finance and Personnel Meeting for February is, and the Public Works Committee meetings are going to be held the day prior due to the election, so those will be held on Monday. Absentee ballots for anybody who had a request on file were mailed out last week by the deadline. They are due back to City Hall by eight PM on Tuesday, February twentieth. They cannot be placed in the drop box, if they are placed in the drop box, they will not be counted. Make sure that you sign the front, fill out your address, it's all highlighted and comes with a set of instructions, but if anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call. In-person absentee voting begins tomorrow, February sixth, at eight AM, and runs Monday through Friday, eight AM until four PM, except for Friday, the sixteenth, that'll be eight AM until five PM. Does anybody have any questions?
Do the polls on the twentieth open at seven or eight?
They open at seven AM.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Then we will move on to mayors, and we have, the RDA, at our last meeting, we had some comments about putting Marv- Marv Rose on, and now we can go ahead to put her through, so we would need a motion to put Marv Rose on the ADA.
For the RDA?
RDA.
Second.
Okay, would you do a roll call on that?
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Mitch.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jake.
Yep.
Scott.
Yes.
Okay, then the only other comment I wanna make is that Alg- Algoma received word that the Trinidad shipwreck was discovered nine and a half miles offshore of Alg- Algoma, and the Wisconsin Historical Society in Madison is doing the work to put it on the Historical Register. They did invite us down to Madison on February twenty-third, of which Matt will go and represent Algoma at this meeting, but they also allow it to be a Zoom meeting where we can watch what is happening here, so I'm going to organize it so on the twenty-third that in this room, we can watch what's happening, and I think it'll go a long way to Madison to see that we have a lot of people that are interested in this shipwreck information, so I'll get the information out to everybody as soon as I confirm with them that we can have multiple people on Zoom.
Is that, is that invitation open to anybody on the council or just the administrator?
Anybody, anybody, from the city.
And what time is it?
Um, I don't, Madam Mayor, I think it starts at eleven?
Yeah, they're doing, doing like four different Zoom meetings, so they, they have a code that is just the Algoma one.
Portion of it.
So you don't have to sit and watch the whole meeting.
Could that be?
Okay, but we will get more information out to everybody on that.
Could that be recorded and put on our TV channel and on our website? Or, or social media?
Let me look into that, I mean, we can record it, I'd think on Zoom, but we're not the Zoom host, they would have to allow it. We'd have to check if we could do that.
So there's not gonna be a live feed to our cable network or anything?
There wouldn't be, no, because they would be the host of the Zoom.
But anybody can come here and watch it?
Correct, or you can log on to Zoom.
If they allow it.
Yes.
But it would be, it would be a nice touch if we could have it on our social media, on our website, or, and our TV channel.
Okay, those are the only comments I wanted to make, so then we can move on to any agenda items for our next meeting, get it to either Matt or Aaron, so we can get it on the agenda. Our next meeting will be March fourth at six PM here at City Hall, and now we need a motion to go into closed session.
I will make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Parentheses, police officer position and treasurer's position.
Second.
A roll, roll call?
Mary.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Bore.
Yes.
Ortley.
Yes.
Just to remind everybody there, we're coming back.
Yes, we will be coming back, we're swearing into the new police officer.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, we'll see how it goes.
We'll see how it goes.
Timmy.
Timmy.
Timmy, I'm glad to see Timmy.
We have both people and we have the bar.
Oh my goodness.
We have more no than we did before.
Yeah, okay.
Are we good?
All right, so back in open session.
Okay, and we want to swear in the new officer?
I'll, I'd like to make a couple of motions here as discussed here in closed session. I'd like to formally make a motion to move forward with the hiring of Timothy Wagner for the open position for the police officer position in Algoma.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
And...
Call?
No call.
Are you done with your motion?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, membered in?
Yes.
Or it leave?
Yes.
Dashlett?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Gork?
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt?
Yes.
Cavan Schmidt?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Go ahead, Scott.
Then I'd, I'd also like to take the opportunity for those at home that are watching and then also in the audience to thank Sergeant Cody Goldbrand for his service to the city here. Um, as, as we know here, sitting here as a body, Cody has decided to move on to greener pastures, um, take an opportunity and, and, and move to a different department. But on behalf of the, the council and the city, thank you Cody for everything that you've done almost, uh, for almost 10 years. We appreciate your service, so thank you. And then just another note coming out of closed session as well, um, that, to, to make it known that we do have a current open position for the treasurer for the city of Algoma and that will be posted in the coming days.
Now you can swear in if you saw.
Swear, swear in the officer.